Hello and welcome to Ward Talk, CTN's look at the political scene in Ann Arbor. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. We'll be discussing issues and solutions with the city council members from our five wards each month. Joining us this month is Lisa Dish from Ward One. Welcome Lisa, it's been awhile since we've seen you.
It has been.
So it's good to see you.
Thank you Bonnie, it's great to see you.
And I understand you're on, this is your fifth year on the council, so you've been involved in a lot of decision-making and watching all the changes going on.
That's for sure.
Yeah, and you are in Ward One, so let's start with your ward and what's happening. I understand you have some updates on Broadway Park?
Yes.
Number one, so let's start with that.
Yes.
Is that a new development?
It is, it's long in the works. This is a terrific project right on the banks of the Huron River, and if you've been driving over the bridge, over the Broadway Bridge, either going up north into the ward or down into Carytown, you can see that they've made incredible progress reclaiming the site. So this is a seven acre site, and it was used in the early 20th century for, by a coal gasification plant. And that's one of the dirtiest ways of producing an energy that you possibly can do.
So that created the need for a good cleanup?
Yes, they are using brownfield tax credits to reclaim this site, and they took away over 20,000 tons of contaminated soil.
Wow.
But what you can see there now, it will eventually have a number of buildings, some residential, one hotel, a restaurant, so really great mix of stuff. But what you can see there now is a new bridge over the Huron River at Argo Dam, and you can see a lot of public pathways running right along the river. And this is really exciting because while they got this tax incentive financing, they continued to fundraise for private funds, they raised over $10 million to improve this site and bring a lot of amenities that will be used by many people who will come from many wards and probably many states as well, because that, you know, people from Ohio, people from Indiana, they come to use the Argo livery, because it's a renowned...
I didn't know it was so popular.
Seriously, it is so popular that it is not necessarily marvelous for the residents who live adjacent to it, but it is a beautiful wild nature area where you can canoe and tube. And these additions that the Broadway Park development has made to that public facility, I hope will make it a little easier on our neighbors. There's parking associated with Broadway Park that may take some pressure off the neighborhood, and it's just, it's lovely. I mean, it redeems, it opens that part of the river which just, you know, you never even thought about necessarily.
So was this bridge already there, but it was updated and...
No, no, this is a brand-new footbridge.
Oh, a brand-new one?
Built by this development. So they were very thoughtful, it's the Roxbury Group of Detroit, and they put a lot of thought into how they could make this both a place for people to live and for people, whether they live there or not, to play, which is excellent, that caveat, whether they live there or not, because there are so many developments that have nice facilities, but it's only for their residents. And this one is really connecting with and enhancing our public park, so I'm happy about that.
And we do have a lot of parks.
We indeed do.
Like over 150 parks.
Yes.
Ann Arbor is known for its natural beauty.
Absolutely.
And this particular park, you're saying that, are there new signs mentioning, like, are drivers more aware of where it is? Have they improved any signage?
I don't think yet, I think that's yet to come. But, so right now, the primary access to this park, because it's really the first phase of the development, is foot and bike traffic.
And what is the, I know it's not definite, but what do they plan in terms of being a final, how long will it take to be totally finished?
I don't know.
Are we talking years or months?
No, years, because the buildings aren't, you know, but it may be two years. I mean, the big part of the project was the site remediation, and that they have put several years into doing. It involved really enormous, there was, you know...
And where did they, where did they put all of this bad stuff that was in the ground? Do you know, do you have any idea?
No, no, I don't know where that...
Yeah, but it's definitely not in Ann Arbor anymore.
It's not in, it's, yeah, it's not in Ann Arbor, because we don't have a landfill, and I would assume some of it went there. They certainly didn't dump it in the river, so...
So that's, okay, so we'll be updating that every once in awhile.
Yeah, great.
And the second area in your ward is Dunbar Towers, which is in Carytown.
Yes.
Right in the center.
Yes.
And that's really going up now.
Yes.
So what is the plan, what is the plan for when it would be finished?
Well, I'm not sure, probably spring, but I'm not entirely sure.
So there's still a ways to go.
This is a very special project.
Okay.
This is the first project to make use of the Affordable Housing Village that residents voted, approved in 2020, and the strategy for these Affordable Housing Village monies is to build affordable housing, housing affordable to people at 60% area median income and under. So this is housing people who cannot even remotely afford Ann Arbor's housing market, who may have been unhoused, who may be artists. This is housing that's really making a difference in who can live in Ann Arbor, and these housing buildings are being built on city-owned land.
Now, are some of the units, regular price units?
None.
Is the whole thing affordable housing?
All affordable.
Okay.
Right in the center of town, right in one of the loveliest places where a lot of people would want to live, and that is super important. It is also very special because this was the center of black entrepreneurship in the 20th century, and so the name Dunbar Tower was given to this building by the Community Leadership Council, which was a group of African-American people who had ties to the area, either they still live there, or they grew up there, or their parents were there. And it makes a reference to the Dunbar Center, which was an important community center for the African-American neighborhood there. And so this building memorializes it, and it recreates, not the whole life of that community, but there's going to be a great community center on the first floor, which has been designed, the concept for it, and the kinds of things that it will have, the activities that will have, it'll have a makers' space.
But this basically is not a public building for the public to come in, it's basically just a residence? Is there any retail or...
No, I think the community center will be for the public.
For the public, okay.
Yeah, yeah, not just for the residents of the building, but for the public. And the building itself is going to house 63 households, mostly one-bedroom, one-two-bedroom, and half of these are reserved for people, well, the whole thing is 60% area median income, but half of it is reserved for people who are in some way, shape, or form connected to the arts, because there is a recognition that, you know, that is a serious source of unaffordability, so...
Now, in terms of signing up for the housing, I know thousands of people were in need of affordable housing, so is that pretty much closed in terms of people wanting to apply for when it will be ready to be able to move in?
I do not know how these lists work, but I know that they are managed by the Ann Arbor Housing Commission.
So people can check in with them?
And I think that the lists for particular developments may open at specific times, or I could be wrong about that, so people should look on the Ann Arbor Housing Commission site. So it's complicated, the way the lists are managed, which is why.
But I can, I can feel your excitement, because it's been, it's been a long road, and people are asking for help, and we do have some public, some properties that can be used, so this is very exciting.
Yeah, I mean, this is very exciting, that the city has chosen to take this land and commit it to affordable housing, and that does mean that in some places where there used to be a parking lot, people will be living. But we've got parking structures all over that area, and we also, the other thing is that the Downtown Development Authority has increased the number of spots that are reserved for people who may not be as mobile as others, and so they've increased, they've converted...
More accessibility?
Yes, they're more reserved for people with accessibility needs, and so that kind of offsets, oh, we lost that part, proximate parking space, okay, but there's more reserved spaces for accessibility needs.
This could even increase the use of the markets on Saturdays and Wednesdays, you know, we have more people living downtown, more people using the marketplace.
Yes, this is going to be, you know, 63...
And the store, all the stores around.
Right across from the co-op, all the stores around. And then there's another 330 units of housing going on the old Y lot next to Blake Transit Center, also, that's also part of this city-owned land Affordable Housing Village, and that, the development partner was just located for that, and we should see groundbreaking, I'm not sure how soon, but not in the too far future, because once you have the development partner, you're moving along, and the city council already approved a site plan for that. So very exciting to have that much housing coming out of the village.
Yeah, so are there any spaces left that are still not being used that are up for decision-making?
Yes, there are several publicly-owned sites still in the works of development. These two were prioritized because of their centrality, and also because, in part, being so centrally located, they were, they could be a high priority for low-income housing tax credits. And that's the way, that's the way we get access to federal money to fund these projects, which helps our local dollars go further. So, you know, the residents of Ann Arbor should pat themselves on the back, they have made change happen, and it's starting to really show. And I know that people have asked me, like, what's going on there? One person said to me, is that another parking structure? I said, no, people are going to live there.
Well, that's all, all good news, and we're going to be taking a break now, and when we come back, we'll be looking at some updates on what's happening in the whole city, and see if we can become enlightened on those, okay?
Excellent.
All right. We want to hear from you, so please email us questions to ctn@a2gov.org, or tweet us at hashtag #CTNAnnArbor. We're taking a break now, and we'll be coming back with more from Ward Talk.
Hi, I'm Sarah Lanis from the City of Ann Arbor Clerk's Office. We want to show you how easy it is to get involved with your community by serving on a border commission. The City of Ann Arbor appoints over 200 people to over 50 boards and commissions. From sustainability to transportation, we have boards and commissions for a wide range of policy interests. Most of them meet once a month virtually. You can start by visiting a2gov.legistar.com and clicking the Boards and Commissions tab. There you can read a short description about each border commission. When you find one that interests you, click the Apply Now button in the top right-hand corner. You'll complete a short form, including your contact information, background, and why you're interested in serving. Even if there's not a vacancy at the time, we'll keep your application for up to two years. Next, your application goes to City Council, where they may reach out to you to learn more or schedule an interview. Once the council makes their appointments, you'll be contacted on next steps and prepped for your first meeting. Serving is a great way to help shape our city's future. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact our office or visit the website for more information.
Welcome to the southwest side of Ann Arbor, where you'll find a quiet, green retreat nestled between Las Vegas Drive and Grenada Avenue. Welcome to Las Vegas Park. This neighborhood park may be small, just under two acres, but it's packed with charm and community spirit. A wide-open grassy field offers space to run, play, or just soak up the sun. A colorful play structure keeps kids entertained and active, and for a quick pickup game, there's a half-basketball court with lighting for evening fun. A paved, accessible path meanders through the park, perfect for a stroll or a bike ride. Enjoy natural shade from honey locust trees near the playground, plus a variety of other beautiful trees like London Plains, red maples, and little-leafed lyndons. Las Vegas Park is easy to reach by foot or bike, thanks to sidewalks and bike lanes from Stadium Boulevard. Street parking is available along Las Vegas Drive and Grenada Avenue. Just a heads up, there aren't any bike racks, so plan accordingly. Las Vegas Park is a small but beloved corner of Ann Arbor. Come explore, relax, and connect with your community. Want to learn more? Visit a2gov.org/parkfinder and find your next outdoor adventure.
Hello, we're back at Ward Talk with Lisa Dish from Ward One. We're going to be talking about the whole city now, that we've talked about Ward One, and we have several things to go over. We're going to start with the effects of the federal decision-making, and what funds they're allowing to be used, what funds they're holding back, and how is it affecting the city and some of the city programs that are ongoing? So this is a big question.
Yeah, it's a huge question, and again, you know, I am very grateful to live in a city where residents have dedicated their property taxes to supporting affordable housing and climate action, you know, carbon neutrality, because these are two areas where the federal government is cutting. And though I think that the city will need to make some cutbacks in many different areas because of the federal cuts, we have these funds from our residents that we can use as a fallback.
So you have a cushion?
We have a cushion, I mean, we have, some of these projects will go forward no matter what, because they are funded by funds that our residents have, you know, voted to tax themselves for, and that puts us in a very fortunate position. Now, everything goes farther when you can use public monies to, you know, federal monies to augment what you, the resources that you have.
Because if I understand it, when federal money is used, they have very specific do's and don'ts. You can use this money for this, but not that, whereas the city has more control over how their funds are being used.
Yes, certainly the general fund is something that we can use as we wish, and so I think our biggest worries are how the, how the cuts are going to affect the services that we rely on the county to provide, and that we also provide money to the county. We already, we give them extra money over and above where we are obligated to commit to the county for homelessness, or, you know, to help the unsheltered, and to, and for also food relief programs and things of that nature.
Which I understand the food relief programs are really bursting with much more need.
Yes, yes, there, there is so much more demand, and so anything that people want to give, if they want to give extra, that's a great place to send it. There's an important organization called Jewish Family Services that does refugee resettlement, very effective, very important, in, to the city and the county, and their coffers are hurting, because they depend in part on federal monies. So many of the services that Ann Arborites really care about, that are available to support people who do not have stable housing, do not have stable work, and may have food insecurity, these are county, county-funded activities and county-managed activities, and we are worried about the impact of the federal cuts on those activities, because we know that their budgets are hurting, so...
So how do you work along with the county in terms of deciding where the needs are and how the needs are met? I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I don't, that isn't my area, and...
But just for us to know, that you are working along with the county?
Yes.
And not just completely on your own?
Yes, and Ann Arbor is, well, the county really is the source of those services. Many people think that those are the responsibility of Ann Arbor, but as a matter of fact, the, you know, the providing shelter to people who are unhoused and providing food, that's really the county's domain. Ann Arbor contributes considerable resources, financial resources, to support those activities, but they are county-level. Yes, so, yeah.
Okay, and in the same field, we had a program, I don't know if it was for one year or two years, the Guaranteed Income Plan, that's coming to an end now. So who is that for, and is there, is it absolutely, definitely final?
Well, it's a, it was a two-year pilot, and the funding for that was from American Rescue Act money, from the Biden administration, and the idea was not only to provide a universal basic income to households, but also to research the effect of universal basic income proposals. And so we just had a terrific report on council from the University of Michigan researchers who were driving the other, well, driving both parts, but doing the research reporting, and one of the things that they told us was that a large effect of this universal basic income grant, which was not a large grant, but it was an important supplement on top of funds that people already get.
Where these people could plan on and know that they're getting a certain amount of subsidy every single month, right?
Right, on top of what other safety net money they might be receiving, they got this. And people who received this, these funds reported feeling as though their government cared about them, which is huge, and that they were members of the community, which I think we worry about people being unsheltered, people not having enough to eat, but what we don't maybe worry enough about, or realize, how people feel isolated and out of it, and not members. And so this was an empowering, this, these grants had an empowering effect, and so what the researchers are now working on is how to transition people out to find more, you know, other resources, so that they don't, you know, so that they don't lose everything, but also how to continue that feeling, how to capitalize on that, which may be just as important. And so I was very uplifted by the report on that.
Is this report finalized and available to the public?
I think it's a draft right now.
Oh, okay, okay.
But, but there was a presentation at July, I think it was July 21st, the city council meeting, and so people can watch that or download just from the, you can go to the internet and just put in UBI program Ann Arbor, and you would be able to find those resources, so, yeah.
Great, and we have the Tree Line Trail, we talked about that yet?
No, we haven't talked about that yet.
Okay, that's just an update, because we've had the Tree Line Trail for a while, but this kind of goes along with the fact that we have so much nature property in Ann Arbor, so have they done more with the Tree Line Trail?
So they've been very busy. This is a, the Tree Line Trail is a great example of a public-private partnership, where most of the funding is privately raised, and most of the, the design and stuff is really in control of the Tree Line Conservancy, but the city partners with them, staff support, we're about to partner together on a specific design for what the Tree Line Conservancy is calling the Gateway Bridge, and this is going to go from one side of North Main to the other, starting near Casey's and the train station, and ending near the city yards at 721 Main. And so it's, it's a kind of daunting project, but it is going to be a pedestrian and bicycle bridge over North Main Street, and I think that that has the potential to change how, change the connectivity of Ann Arbor, you know, what people think is far away, once you no longer have that four-lane, what feels like a highway to cross, that will help. But it is important, and I want to make sure to emphasize that, though this bridge will be a way of making that transition by going over Main Street, the city is still very committed to making the at, you know, the surface crossings, so the at-ground level crossings, better along there, because they are not adequate to facilitate pedestrians and cyclists.
Which is also a safety issue.
It is a big safety issue, that is not, it's not the way, I mean, it is a gateway to Ann Arbor, and it's not the way I like to welcome people, so I'm hoping that we get, you know, a little bit more for pedestrians and cyclists there, because of course it connects to parks that people like to go to, and we want to make that easier.
And talking about land, we have a comprehensive use land plan.
Yes.
What's the update on that?
Yes, so Ann Arbor is doing a major update of its comprehensive land use plan, and this plan is not a zoning law, this plan is a framework for rezoning that will happen in the future to make possible more housing opportunity across the city.
And you're really looking at spreading it out so that it's not just centralized in downtown, you're looking at other areas of the city that can offer more opportunity?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, I think that the greatest height should be concentrated in the parts of downtown that are not historic districts, of course, and also in the campus proximate neighborhoods where we are already seeing height. But all neighborhoods, whether they are single-family neighborhoods, or they're zoned for larger apartment housing, all neighborhoods should participate in providing more opportunity for people to live in Ann Arbor, because I know that many people say that Ann Arbor is changing, and they don't like the way it's going, but Ann Arbor's changing in a way that right now is uncontrolled, it's driven by forces that are out of our, out of our control. It's because we are a job center, it's because the university keeps growing, the medical center keeps growing, this is where people come to work now, it's not Flint, it's not Detroit, so of course Ann Arbor has changed. But the market is driving too much of that change, and the plan is, is our chance to think about, how would we like to accommodate more people who need to be here because they work here?
So this is a long-term project to go through it and finalize it?
It is, so what is important for people to know is that the plan is almost finished being the second, well, it'll be the third draft by the time it comes out. That third, the second draft's under revision, so the third draft is about to come out probably in six weeks or so, and then there will be a 63-day public comment period, where Ann Arborites can read the plan and say things that they do and don't like about it. Now, we've had a lot of public comment already, both in the neighborhoods, at the public libraries, and at the planning commission, and, and the Ann Arbor City Council, but we look forward to more, and I look forward to people remembering to themselves that we are a community that values equity, and that that is part of what this plan is trying to achieve.
Well, this is a very exciting update, we've run out of time, but I do want to thank you, Lisa, for all of this new information, and I look forward to watching, you know, all the updates in the future, so thank you for joining us.
Yes, you're welcome.
And please remember to join us for a new episode every month. We want to hear from you, so please email us at ctn@a2gov.org. Attention, Ward Talk. You can also follow CTN and ask questions on Twitter at twitter.com/ctnannarbor. We'll make sure to include your questions. For those programs and all of other CTN's program, head online to youtube.com/ctnannarbor. For Ward Talk, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz, until next month.